Welcome to the Santaquin City Council meeting for second week in January. What's the date, the 18th, 17th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. It's seven o'clock and it's time to get underway. We have a few items that we really need to discuss tonight. We're grateful for those that are attending, glad to have them with us. I did want to say we'll call the roll, but the only one missing is Lynn Meacham tonight. That'll be the roll call. Lynn was excused, it's his anniversary, so good for him. He needs to be gone tonight. I would like to ask if there was anyone that would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will.
Okay.
Can you say the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Betsy. Do I have someone that would offer an invocation or an inspirational thought that would like to offer that?
Thank you. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day that we can meet together as a city and to discuss the importance, the important meeting, the important events of this day. We ask that thy Spirit might dwell with the council members and the mayor and all those who advise them and who work with the city that we might have the proper and the best outcome of all of the agenda items today. Father, we ask that those who are sick in the city and those abroad, that we might find peace and health and help us, Father, to come together in unity and in peace. And these things we pray in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We need to make a declaration of potential conflicts of interest. I am unaware of any. Any on the council? Okay, we'll move right on. Consent agenda. There are meetings or minutes from the work session and minutes from council last time. I know Councilman Adcock, you had a comment on those or one of those?
Yes, the council meeting minutes for January the 4th, on page six of the minutes, the paragraph that begins Mountain Viking Park, the end of that paragraph ends in an open sentence. It's not a, it's not a complete sentence, it just stops like maybe they got interrupted in the middle and didn't get back to it.
That's probably me speaking. That's kind of how I end now and again.
So it'd be my suggestion that we table those minutes until they can be corrected.
That's fine. Are there any other questions with bills that need to be paid? And with the finance director, that was approved in council last time. So are we okay with consent agenda then?
I have a question about a payment of a $7,000 impact fee to SKM Incorporated. I just wonder what that's about.
SKM is our, is our SCADA provider. They take care of all the electronics for our wells for the sewer treatment plant. So they're a technical IT provider for that kind of work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we need to vote on that one or is it since its consent?
You do need to vote. It does need to be roll called because it's gotten an ordinance, but we would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda by tabling the council work meeting minutes of January 4th, 2022.
Not the work meeting.
Or regular meeting minutes of January 4th, 2022.
So can I have that motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda other than the council meeting minutes for January the 4th.
And that moves those till next time for approval?
We can look at them again, see if they've been corrected.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sidaway?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
That passes. Public forum, do we have anyone that has signed up for the public forum and we can move ahead with that?
And that is it?
Okay.
Hey, my name is Chelsea Rowley and I came tonight to represent many residents and business owners who have approached me about their concerns with the Melhoff rezone. No one that I have spoken with is in support of rezoning our commercial lands for residential. I won't even mention the word townhouse, I know it's going to make your eye twitch, so we're just going to skip over all of that. We know that the stresses that that causes on our community. Several home businesses have expressed the desire to have storefronts in Santaquin, but the property and building costs were barriers to entry in this time of economic uncertainty. I know if this property was developed into a well-planned commercial park, that it could, that these people could lease these storefronts that are looking for these opportunities. There is still a bright future ahead for exit 242. If we fill our only dedicated commercial lands with homes without providing services to our residents, they'll be forced to spend their dollars outside of our community. We need to be wise and protective over our commercials-owned property. Our growth cannot only come from people. The proposed 35 acres is approximately the size of our recent Ridley's development with Macy's in the back and Little Caesar's in the front. I know a similar anchor store could be put in the back of this property, not needing frontage to pull shoppers in. Many businesses like the movie theater in Payson don't have frontage, and yet you all know where it is and you've most likely seen a movie there. People will come if we build it. The last time this rezone was proposed, the owners of the property were told that although it was well-thought-out development, the location and the timing would result in a denial. The city council has already rejected this rezone proposal once before. The landowners were told that prior to considering a rezone of commercial to residential, the city believed it was in the best interest to complete the updating of our Santaquin city's general plan, which has not yet been completed. Allowing this development with a dirt road on one side, gravel pit on the other side, surrounded by commercial front and the other side would create an isolated island development. As a city, we are continually striving to overcome our already difficult geography to make our city more cohesive. This development would be a step in the wrong direction. I am sympathetic to Mr. Melhoff's desire to get started on a project for his land to maximize his profits. I would encourage all of us to be proactive in inviting businesses to come to Santaquin. Once we are able to get our needed infrastructure in this area, I know it will explode with opportunities. We simply don't make choices that are cheap and easy and available. We base them on lasting value, no matter the work, time, and sacrifice it takes to get there. I would ask that you vote no to a rezone at this time. We must keep our commercial zones commercial for a better and brighter Santaquin. And then I've got a list of names who signed my document and I'll just send that around and take a peek at it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything? Okay, we'll move on. Thanks, Chelsea. Are there any bid openings, awards, or appointments that we need to do?
No.
Then, building permits, business licenses.
With Jason out ill today, I don't have a report for you, but we will be happy to email that out to the council as soon as it's available.
That might be a good way to do it, especially if he's out for a couple of days. Okay. Hope he gets well soon. We'll move on then, and what we're going to do is discuss and possibly act upon the Melhoff property rezone that was just talked about by Chelsea Rowley. Why don't, why don't we start with this? Would you like to stand and discuss what you would like to do? And we'll give you a few minutes, you can go over it, then we'll ask some questions and proceed from there, okay? And state your name when you get up there, so...
Sure. I'm Chris Olson, Trent Melhoff's partner on the property. We appreciate the opportunity to present this. We, we know we've been here before and we feel like we've, you know, made some, some good improvements on the project based on what we've been told and our proposal. We feel like we've been responsible and looked out for the best interest of the city. We've got 20 acres in the front that we've, that we're proposing to be commercial. We would be willing to increase that if we felt like it would get the project approved. We, we feel like we've been open-minded and listening to what the, you know, the needs of the city are and what the wishes of the city are. We reviewed the, when we first came in, Utah State was doing their study, they were in the middle of that, and that's been completed quite for a while now. We went back and looked at that and kind of looked at what they proposed to try to make sure that we were incorporating some things that they had in their, you know, what they were proposing. Not that maybe those were not the best things for the city, but we at least took those into We, Trent Melhoff, my partner, has owned the property for quite a while, at least half of it, for about eight years, and wanted to move his RV business down and still would like to, but haven't, we haven't been able to put together a plan that we've obviously got approved yet, so he hasn't been able to do that. One of the things in, in doing our project and improving our project, it would get the utilities and the infrastructure over to that area, which I agree would make the area, you know, take off and be developed. The other thing that I want to bring up on, and I know you guys are in the process of redoing the master plan, but there's, if you look over the master plan, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, Summit Ridge Park, Summit Ridge Parkway is the one that really, really jumped out at me. I mean, there's a lot of main thoroughfares where there could possibly be more commercial and there may or may not be, you know, in those areas, but on those main roads, the Frontage Road, along the freeway, there's a lot of areas that could potentially make sense to be commercial that are currently not zone commercial. We feel like what we've proposed is probably the, the best thing for that area, for where our property is. On the north side, next to the orchards, we're over 1,000 feet back off of the Frontage Road, is, is commercial. So we're quite a ways off the Frontage Road. You know, we, we, and I'll let Brandon, he's got some slides and some things on some other projects in other cities that we've looked at as far as the amount of acreage that's required to put in a, you know, Walmart or, or a big box, you know, that we brought up. And currently, what we've currently got in the front there, the 20 acres, the most every other big box that we looked at in other cities, we have more than enough room there in the front to accommodate a Walmart, a Costco, the big boxes that we're talking about. So those still could potentially be put in there in the, in the front, even if the rezone was done, approved. We feel like, you know, one of the, one of the, we've been told several times, everybody, you know, loves our project, it's a great project, it's well-thought-out, it's just not the right time, the right place. You know, I, I don't, as far as, as far as being intrusive on the surrounding neighbors and I don't know what we could put in there that's going to be less intrusive. I mean, do we put, you know, do we put in the back there, do we put, do we put big concrete tilt-ups with a bunch of different businesses in there? Do we put, you know, we tried to, we really tried to, did try to think it through and we don't, you know, there's been, there's been talk about high density and that we don't want more high density. We're only four and a half units per acre, we've got almost over seven acres of parks in our project. So we feel like the project, I've worked with John for years, John's been doing developments for 40 years in, all over Utah County, almost every city in Utah County, and all of his projects, if you go to his projects, they're all well-maintained, they're still, some of the projects he's done 30-plus years ago are still very well-kept projects because of the way that they're developed and people want to live there and they want to take care of it. The HOA is taking care of all of the, all of the green space, which keeps the neighborhood nice and, you know, you're going to have limited traffic in and out. We've got good access in and out of the project, which will be less intrusive on the neighbors around that area. There's a lot of residential going in behind us to the, to the, to the southwest, and so just the comment that this is going to be on an island is a little bit, I don't know, I mean, in my, my opinion is a little bit short-sighted because that, that, that pit's going to go away and something's going to get built back there, I don't know. And then behind that, you've got the railroad tracks, you've got the city park. Seems like a good place for residential. We, we've talked about, you know, the, the plan from Utah State talks about having a walking path and a jogging path that connects to different key areas in what they were proposing. Our project is such that we could put a path through there, we would be willing to do that, put a path through there to connect through there if that was, you know, something that, that would enhance the project and get it closer to what, you know, the city is, is wanting there. I, I appreciate, you know, everybody being willing to listen to, to our proposal and consider it. I'm going to turn the time over to John now, who's been, like I said, been building these projects for 40-plus years. One of the reasons that we teamed up with John, he's built a couple of projects for me in other cities and done a great job, he's got a great reputation, building projects that, you know, that, that stay quality projects that, where people want to live so they, they stay owner-occupied. They don't turn into, you know, rental, rental type neighborhoods because they are well-planned, they have parks, they have trails, they have all the amenities that people want and where, you know, where people want to live. So I'll turn the time over to him and thanks again.
Before you sit down, are there any questions that you have for Mr. Olson?
I have a question, but I think it's probably more directed at the types of housing.
Yeah, if it's detailed about the, about the units, John will be able to answer those better than I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for letting us share it again, and the value in doing it again is the mayor hasn't seen this, at least I don't think he did 20 months ago or so when we first proposed it, and we have new council members and Dave was here and Betsy, but thank you for the, for letting me explain what we would do to the, the actual houses and the site because it is...
Would you state your name so that we have it in the record?
John Dester. Our company's Georgetown Development. So I'm going to start right here where Betsy just asked that question. Four distinct home types within the project, and I'm going to go right into where they are within the project. And I understand that, and I've, I've come to find that this townhome is really the wrong word and, and that's sad, I've built a couple thousand of them. I do build them rather differently than others. I, there are certain things about the way that we put this together that's way different than others. And, and I hope you can see right off the bat that there's a ton of open space there, not just open, but landscaped space. And so I'll, I'll go along and explain that. But when we build them, even the, whether there are smaller townhomes that we've built in so many cities, almost every city in this county except Santaquin, we, we have a project of those townhomes. They, the, the townhomes that I'll show you right, they go right there, and they kind of surround that Central Park area, and they look like this sometimes. We have about two or three different architectural styles that we build of them, but each time we do it, we make sure that each one of these houses is different. There's no two alike. You probably have seen them maybe over in Payson or Spanish. And the other important thing that I, I place a high degree of value on, and our, our buyers always have, and that makes us different, is the private yards. When we do that, when we put private fenced yards behind these townhomes, it reduces the density that we can do, obviously. If you're going to take all this space and just give it to each townhome, we can't build as many townhomes. So they're not placed near as dense as some are, but the value to the homeowner, and it's why our homeowners actually stay in these townhouses for much longer. I mean, I don't know if some are still in my 40-year-old project in Orem, that's a long time, but at 30 years there were, there were still people living there that we sold that long ago. So, yes.
Is that the project behind Target?
No, but that's a good one, and we're going to talk about that in just a second. That's a great one, I'm glad you know that project. It's similar, different architecture, but it's similar. The next product that I want to show you is, these are really large townhouses. I don't want to build too many of them in one place, but they look like this. They are, they have two-car garages and two-car parking places in front. They're really more like houses that we just join together on the side in groups of threes and fours and stuff like, you see there. Anyway, those also have private backyards, everything that we do will have it, each style that I show you will have that. I'm going to try to go fast because I want to not take all the time and let Brandon show you some things. These houses right here, we call them heirloom houses, and we, we've built this in three other cities over the last 10 years, and they sell primarily to retirees or busy professionals. They are, they're only joined at the, let me see if I can bring some up, they're, they don't even look like they're joined, but they, they're only joined at the garages. So your common wall is not another person's house, it's just the common wall through their garage. And there's open space all around each house, so there's light and ventilation around all sides, and they just are real appealing. The pictures that are right there are in a project that we're just finishing in Provo now. So we started it like 20 months ago when we were in here, but we're just wrapping that up. And they did sell to all really heavily retirees, and we did have a couple people that are just busy professionals. They look like this, they have those private yards that you see in the front instead of the back. And if you'll notice, the garage doors are all hidden, the garages are behind them kind of, and attached in unique ways to where when you drive through, you don't see any garages or cars. But all of them have two-car garages, they all have two spaces in front of the garage door so that you have four spaces per home. Let me catch up with myself here. Around, around the heirloom houses are that, that, does this thing point? I guess not.
It does, but not on the table.
Yeah, it's, it's like a laser, but it doesn't. So there's a Central Park in the middle of the, the heirloom houses, not that one, go north, or, or, yeah, that Central Park right there. In each case, we've got dedicated extra parking, guest parking. Now, these houses there, what we did, since you saw it the first time, David and Betsy, we flipped the project over. The idea being, instead of having those houses that are single-family homes down on the bottom back up to the, to the road at the top, that's a gravel road now, and it can stay a gravel road. It, it's Chris and Trent's Road, they own it, they own the property, but what we did is we designed our project to leave the road the way it is, put a, put a, you know, these concrete walls that look like stone, that will go all the way around the entire project. So between us and the road, you've got a parkway right there, you can see the, the space for, it's essentially a park that goes all around the project. And then you have a rock, the, the wall, and then you have a road. And so I think it's 150 feet from a house to the orchard going to the north by doing it this way. So we put the retirement houses, they're all so quiet, sometimes the garage doors don't go up in a, in a, even in a day, nobody's moving that much in them. But let me talk about those, the ones on the bottom are single-family detached, we've built those in a number of cities, and they look like that, which is pretty common nowadays. The, the lots are anywhere from 60 to 80 feet wide, and what we did is we redesigned it with more of the 80-foot-wide lots. By doing that, we can build more houses that have main floor master bedrooms, and thereby not just the retirement, we call them retirement houses at the top, but not just those, but these on the bottom, which are single-family detached and like a normal house in every way, we can do more of them for someone that actually does want to retire and still have single-family detached house. Okay, we're kind of proud of this. This is your, this is, this, these pictures are taken from your ordinance, and in the ordinance, it's just, it's pretty hard to read some of those examples of open space. This is taken right out of your ordinance, that project there with the big grass spot and the one on the bottom is the project behind Target. I built that in 1983 and 84, I was a lot younger back then, and, but that project has stayed absolutely popular, I mean, there's only 40 homes in there, and they sell very quickly if anybody's willing to sell theirs. And the interesting thing is, Brandon will speak to this, but I'm going to crack the door open. When I built that project there, I built another project to the west of it as well, there was no Target there. That Target didn't exist until we built our couple of projects and others filled in, and he'll show you a slide of that, but I just thought I'd mention it where you're familiar with it, Dennis, that, that, that project is a good one. But we're kind of proud that you're, there's two different projects there. I'm not sure which townhouse those are up on the right-hand corner, but it's, it's mine, one of my projects.
It's in Lehigh.
It's in Lehigh? No. That project in Lehigh? Anyway, the, the, we think it's good, we think you had the right, you were on the right track when you selected those as ideas for what something should look like. So within our project, we have 61% of it open space. That's probably double what anybody, I don't know what your requirement is, we just knew from the early on that that was a massive amount of open space. So think in terms of density, it's very low density. When you, when you join the houses together like I did in some of the townhouses or the heirloom houses at the top, it just results in more open space, more parks, and nearly 50% of the project is landscaped. That presents another little bit of a problem in that when you have that much landscaping, you, and see, we, those light green areas, I think it's 12, there's 12 different locations within the project. Each one of the product types is served by different parks in its own little neighborhood. Well, the, the project on the top is the one we're finishing in Provo now, there's the park in the middle. The park here in Santaquin would be twice that size because it's, that's half, it'd just flip over and you, you have the, in effect, the Santaquin park. The amenities are well-used in all of our parks, that's what they look like after, that was probably 10 years in on those, that park. And what we want to do is the park and meadow so that there's groomed areas and there's areas that are left as what they call meadow. This was pioneered by Daybreak up in South Jordan, where when you have massive amounts of open space and landscape green area, you got to leave some of it. It's not weeds, it's actual plants that they know how to, you know, you plant in the right spot. We, we have four different playgrounds proposed on the project, pavilions and gazebo's around and pergolas, they're all well-used in all of our other projects. And a clubhouse and a pool is proposed for this project because we have enough people in the whole project to support it and pay the cost of that. And we got four parking places per home, which is nearly double what's usually required. And, and in that slide, it just shows where there's really guest parking thrown all around the project. And I, if it's okay, I really want Brandon to be able to explain, so we were doing a tag-team thing here. Do you have questions for me?
I do.
Okay.
So I, I think everyone is probably aware that we don't have any 55-plus housing in Santaquin, and there is a big desire and a big need for that.
I like that.
So I'm wondering if it would be considered to increase the number of units that are 55-plus and to designate them as such. I know for some developers, that's not... I know for some developers, that's not their preferred way to designate. But seeing as there is such a, such a need and a desire, I'm wondering if that is a possibility in possible future negotiations.
Absolutely. And the thing, the thing we did, let me back it up then really quick. The difference between what you saw the first time and this one is where we moved them to the top. Not only did we do that, but we added two or six, eight, eight more of that type on the top.
The heirloom?
Uh-huh, of the heirloom type, we added eight more. And then on the bottom, we took a few single family homes out and made the other lots bigger, like I said, to to have more retirement. Let me speak to the fifty-five and older thing. These houses are are, what I do is I target the house, the design of the house, to someone that's fifty-five and older. We haven't done one where it's restricted because it's Utah and we have families that um, I mean, some of those restricted projects, what I hear is that nobody wants any kids around, they don't want grandkids around, you know, all that. And this is Utah and we, the the purpose of those houses, honestly, I think I've, there's, there's eighteen plus eight, so we're dealing with twenty-six of them now. I think there's twenty-six families, twenty-six, if you will, people that would sell their home and walk in Santaquin. And if not just Santaquin, we'll reach out to Salem or some, you know what I mean? If they find out that they're available down here, if I could have built thirty-six of them on that property in Provo, they'd all be gone. I mean, we had eighteen, they're all, they were all gone within six, seven months of starting. They just meet a need. But I wanna speak to all four top product types, they all meet a need for different people at different times in their life. And that's why, when we had an opportunity, when Chris and and Trent first brought it over, I said, holy cow, that's, that's great, that's thirty-five acres. We need to do something fun with it, uh different than just thirty-five acres of R one ten houses. Because if we build the type that are on the top, retirees flock to that. I, and it, um, the one in Provo, those eighteen, we have two families that have teenage kids that live in them, that's it. And they bought them, they're about fifty-five years old now. There, I I thought, this is interesting that they wanna live with all the rest of us, cuz I'm moving into that project myself. And all of us seventy year old people, uh but they're looking forward. They're just saying, I know I need to retire into something like this, so they chose it. But it's targeted, as opposed to restricted, I like to target it. But if you feel that it's important, and that was the view of of um staff and everybody, that it should be a restricted one, then I'd look at it. You know, I need to learn myself why that is a good thing to restrict it. We just work really hard to target it so that those little yards, perfect for, I mean, they're so neat what people are doing in those yards that are about the size of this right here. But they've got gardens going in there and everything, so. Any other questions that I can answer?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Brandon Mills, Georgetown Development. Um thank you for taking some time and listening, to listen to our proposal. Um one question that has come up as we have uh presented our ideas, a concern about introducing residential uh next to an orchard. Uh I just wanted to point out, this slide illustrates, uh let me bounce to the slide. This slide illustrates that um there is um residential, existing residential next to the orchards uh throughout Santaquin. And um in looking at different parts of um of the envisioned Santaquin that Utah State put together. Uh it's not only um shown um where orchards and residential can be together, they are in harmony and uh and from um from what I've seen, it seems to be encouraged. Um I'd just like to share a few quick slides, maybe some of you have had a chance to look through their um envisioned Santaquin um uh presentation. Uh Utah State University presents three hubs for the agritourism. Uh there's a north, a downtown, and a southern hub. The uh southern hub, which is called the Heritage Hub, is right next to our project, it's actually on the northwest corner. And uh one thing that they touch on in their presentation is uh those bullet items. Uh but the bottom one um talks about connection to the reservoir, housing, and nearby orchard. Uh the next uh slide here um talks about uh again, close to new residential development, which seems to be in harmony with the vision. Um they touch on the loop, uh having pedestrian and bike trails uh tied to the uh the vision there. Um and uh we look at it as an opportunity to help support that vision. Um if there's a way that we can uh incorporate some trails along our project and uh support that, we'd uh love to participate. This slide, I just blew up that portion of it, um their presentation, uh that's the the south hub. Um and it, what they show there certainly uh reflects residential um throughout that area. Um I look at that and I get excited. Again, another slide from their presentation, um lots of people uh out and about and I think that's a a great vision. Next, I just wanna touch on, and I I only will take a few more minutes, but um the idea of um what what could we do that uh with the remaining uh commercial out in front? Maybe a neighborhood Walmart uh in Pleasant, uh uh this one happens to be in Pleasant Grove. Total acres there is five point three four acres, um that footprint of the uh the neighborhood Walmart. Uh we have uh twenty acres remaining and feel that there might uh be a way to to attract something like that. Um so maybe a neighborhood Walmart isn't uh uh big enough, um something that uh people are considering. Uh here I just draw attention to the surrounding uh residential and commercial with frontage uh along there. That's State Street in Pleasant Grove. And uh uh maybe a Walmart, this particular Walmart is in Cedar Hills, um but it's thirteen point zero seven acres. There is um some commercial uh to the left there and um that's a McDonald's and a bank that is on the corner there. But uh with twenty acres remaining, something like that, a footprint like that could exist uh in in the area that uh we're talking about. Again, the residential, I wanna just quickly touch on one thing in this slide. If you look um right in the center bottom is a church, um and to the left, there are two pieces of uh ground there. Um that is um uh zone commercial. Walmart actually started uh their process, uh process in about two thousand seven, two thousand eight to build there in Cedar Hills. Um those two lots have sat there uh because it is deep. It's far off of the main uh commercial area, which this is right across from Lone Peak High School. Um those two have sat empty um until recently. Uh Lone Peak Lofts LLC has actually, uh they're doing something with that corner piece. But commercial um isn't really sustainable, even with the neighborhood and the access where it's that deep off of the main road. Um this here, uh John mentioned Target in Orem, um this is the uh two developments that he mentioned. Uh it's uh, it's hard to pick them out of the the rooftops. Um but uh kind of the top left and the right, bottom right next to Target. Um again, yeah, that part and left a little bit from, yep, right there. So those are two developments that uh were completed in Orem. Um but again, uh you know, some substantial commercial with great frontage, either along State Street or Center Street there in Orem. Um that that uh, you know, is sustainable because of the access to it. Um as John mentioned, the um, the the Target was actually an orchard when he completed those two projects. He said he was younger then, I was younger then as well, but uh um those were orchards. And it actually needed the rooftops before you could attract a a business like Target to come in there and uh and anchor into an area like that. Um just uh on the end on this, it shows the commercial. Um you know, we're, we're uh happy to uh realign some roads on the front end that may uh sustain um some some commercial that would encourage certain commercial layout over there. Um but uh that's all I, uh the portion that that I have. So any questions, um I'm sure we can answer them.
Any questions from the council for any of these? Mr. Olson, Mr. Milne, and Mr. Desler? Okay. Thank you. So um we'll just move on because we need to discuss this and decide if there's an action or uh direction that we would like to go with council. So I I want to open up and get your feelings because uh this is, this is the place where the city has authority. We can, we can look at it and make a decision and um they have um legally came here and paid their way to be in front of us. And so I would like to know um which way we would like to go or which questions you need to have answered to proceed and uh let's go from there. Or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Um considering that the farm access road has been addressed, that they are open to the idea of increasing um fifty-five plus uh targeted homes and possibly um the fifty-five plus specific age group, that it was mentioned that the um that they are open to increasing the commercial, commercial acreage on the project plan. Um that over forty-eight percent of the overall project as it's presented now is landscaped, um open space. And that they have addressed adequate parking at four spaces per home. I would like to call for the question and make a motion that we table this item in order to give staff and the developers additional opportunity to discuss and negotiate um those issues that have been presented tonight as possibilities.
So before we move on, I would like to know, before we table it or anything else, is there something that uh any of you other council would like to bring up?
I'm concerned about surrendering commercial property. We have two parcels in town that have any kind of adequate size to them. One out west of town, near where the lagoons are, and this property here by Summit Ridge. I, I would not be in favor of surrendering land that's zone commercial because we have such little of it in a large quantity altogether to uh to rezoning for it to be a residential. I think that we need all of the sales tax revenue that we can get from businesses, not from property tax, from homeowners.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Adcock? Okay?
Um the proposal is placed in a donut hole, if you will, in the middle of the commercial property with a wall all the way around it that completely isolates the residents of that community from the remainder of town. It creates an island and it, it doesn't contribute to connectivity or a feeling of community togetherness.
Mr. Sitaway, Mr. Hathaway, either?
I agree, it's, it's a well, very well planned layout. It's the location and giving up the commercial land that I do have concerns with. Uh we talked about how many commercial acres we have at the work meeting, how many C one specific acres do we have in town?
I think that's on your sheet, Mayor.
Not the CBD, not the MSC, specifically C one. Cuz when I look at the zoning map, I see it up on the north interchange and right here, essentially. Not that much of that little bit of red.
Total C one?
C one.
Uh three hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, so that's nearly ten percent of our C one that's dedicated just to commercial, not to resident, not having residential aspects to it. And we're gonna give up ten percent of that for a, a good plan, but it is still surrounded by commercial and a farm. And it just, it doesn't make sense in that location to me and to give up that much commercial land for it. I don't, I don't know if I would, I don't, I don't know what they could do to change it to, to make me think it would be a better payout for us in the long run.
Okay. Mr. Hathaway?
Well, I, I'm gonna tell these guys what I told them last time. I appreciate, I appreciate the presentation and it does look nice. My issue is, is what I said before, and I agree with Art and Jeff. I, I don't wanna surrender any commercial, commercial to residential. But that was, that's not against these guys, I'd say, I'd say no to any of them, any, any more residential out there. That's just where I stand, I feel Santaquin can use the commercial more than they can use the, the private.
Okay. Well, do we need a, the possible action would have to be in a form of a motion.
You have a motion to table.
I, I called, I called for the question and a motion to table.
To table. So? Do you wanna restate that again?
Um considering the items that were brought forth in the presentation that are open to possible continued negotiation and considering that we don't have a completely full council here tonight, and this is a big decision. And um considering that we know that the cost of infrastructure inhibits um commercial business from coming in, especially um smaller type businesses and companies, um then I motion to table so that staff can continue in negotiation and discussion with the developer.
Do I hear a second for that? Hearing no second, I think it's dead. So, we move forward.
Is there another motion?
Is there another motion?
Based upon the information that I have received from the citizens that voted for me, based upon the the decision that the planning commission made last week, I would make a motion that we deny this annexation, or this rezone, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thus noted. We're not gonna change the zone. So thank you all for coming and appreciate your presentation, I appreciate what you've done. So, thank you all for coming and, uh, appreciate your presentation. I appreciate what you've done. If there's one thing that I think would be really good, you still own the property, you still have property rights. You can do whatever you want with that property. But I want to tell you what, what I think. I think that would sell this. Not come in and say, well, we got a Target in, in, uh, in Pleasant Grove or we have a Walmart in American Fork or wherever. It's, what is the business plan for this? And, and you mentioned, well, he, Mr. Melhoff was, was anxious eight years ago to bring in, uh, a trailer facility that would repair trailers as well as sell new ones. I never heard a word of that in this discussion. Secondly, and, and to me, and maybe I'll speak out on this. Um, again, Norm, I, I may refer to you, but I see a serious situation with a development that sits in the bottom of a hole, more or less, that has a long ways to go for, uh, sewer. And as I said to the council, water goes pretty well uphill in a pipe, but sewer, you can do the same, but you're going to be paying an awful lot to pump it. And, uh, I think there is a plan that you need to look at for that, but also a plan for what the business is really going to be. Sell us on the business and that might move things forward, but I think the, the council made a decision tonight and that was, uh, we're not going to change that zoning. And, uh, it was unanimous and it's maybe not a full call, uh, council, but it is more than a quorum. So, thank you for coming. I appreciate your time. I appreciate all you've put into this. I hope we can find resolution in it because I respect that property ownership that you do have. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Tanner annexation. Um, do we have a representative from the Tanner family here? Shall we, since, since this is a discussion and there will be no action for annexation, we still need to decide, are we going to go forward with this? Uh, we do have a lot of information. We've discussed it. It's somewhere just under fifty acres, give or take. Um, it's located in the, uh, east central part of Summit Ridge, which is a good old rabbit hunting place with all the cedar trees now gone. But it's still a lot of wheat. It is a good piece of property that probably would have been involved with the original Summit, uh, Summit Ridge, uh, proposal. However, I think, uh, that opportunity passed by many years ago. And now, because it's under new ownership and there is a chance for them to move forward, uh, they're working out, uh, situations that exist there with property lines and, and other things. Uh, but they have a plan put together. They want to know if they, uh, can possibly move forward with the possibility of annexation. Since they are not in the city but surrounded by city, this is what we need to, uh, address. So, um, did I miss anything?
Mayor, I would just make a clarification. The county shows it incorrectly. It is not fifty-one acres. It's about forty-four, forty-three plus a little bit. Almost forty-four acres. The county's numbers that are on the, the, the maps that we typically use are incorrect.
Or is that because they included the railroad properties or something?
I, I'm not sure. Yes, they did, but I'm, it, it appears that rather than the, than the curves and the jagged lines on the eastern border, they just went straight from the point at the top right to the point at the bottom right and called it good and
Oh, didn't take.
It did include showing some of the railroad right away, which they obviously don't own.
Oh, I, I can see how they have that on the, on the plat maps.
Yeah, you can see a line there that basically just goes from straight point A to straight point B and
Actually goes over to the old, uh, uh, road that runs along the dyke.
Right, right.
It's wrong. Okay. So, um, that is something that they want to move forward with. And the only thing that we can do at this time, there's no action in annexing them. There's no pretense that we would assure them that they would be annexed. We would want to look at what they are planning to do with it. And, uh, sometime in the future, and all we would be doing, if I'm not correct, is making a decision that they can move forward, evaluate their land, work with the city, work with the staff, find out if they can come to some sort of an agreement whereby we could fulfill an annexation and then send them through the process of planning and zoning and everything else. So, first steps. Am I correct? Any questions? Any thoughts on it?
I'm obviously concerned about infrastructure. Do we have the, the capability of delivering the water in the sewer and everything else that we need to as a city to provide for those residents? Um, where are we at as far as the staff is concerned?
You know, I, I really did want to say one thing about that, and that is the city has moved forward in the last year with the proposal to build the new PI tank. And that's a great thing because you're able to take care of your, your lawns and other things with uh, outside pressurized irrigation water, but that's a load that it's taking off of the culinary. However, I think your adage to that was the ability to do an evaluation on the engineering so that we could get all the numbers correct and that's what this study will give us.
So, Mayor, before we jump into the technical aspects of it, um, the first step is really to consider, is this something that's viable the council wants to move forward with? And if so, we would prepare a resolution that would start an application, not an application, but start the process why, which we would investigate all that over the next several months. Um, as far as all of the capital facility plans, all of the infrastructure, everything, um, before, um, it would be even considered, uh, to go further to actually be annexed. There would have to be an annexation agreement and then an ordinance that would be passed. That process could take upwards up to, uh, uh, of six months, three to six months in, in that timeframe. So, tonight is just considering engaging the council's field and direction. If you would like to move forward, it would be potentially putting a resolution together for your consideration and then starting that process.
Then that resolution wouldn't come forward until next meeting at this very soonest. So really all it is is a verbal, let's go for it, or do we want to take a vote?
Or take, or, or kill it, yeah.
This property currently is, is blocked in the county?
It is in the county.
Okay.
It's, it's between the railroad tracks and Summit Ridge proper in that little horseshoe cutout.
Doing the pros versus the cons, um, obviously the pro is we bring something into the city and kinda not have an island of county property.
It shrinks the island that's existing.
What are the, what are the cons? What, what is, what's the, the bad side of this? Where, what, if any harm is there to the city if we annex this?
It, it might be premature to say that until we complete the studies that would show the impacts on the infrastructure, each one of those. So, we, we really are at the very beginning. We have a kind of a, I'm going to switch over here to this, we have what, what we would consider a back of napkin concept and layout of what it potentially could look like.
Right.
All subject to negotiation, subject to evaluation with code and all that type of thing. This is really just, um, do we, we, do we even want to consider spending the time to evaluate and take it to the next step?
I just don't want to hang a carrot out in front of them and say, yeah, we might be interested in annexing this if we're not. So I want to find out if there's any reason why we're not interested in doing it.
We don't perceive any reason not to. This one especially being surrounded by Summit Ridge and all sides and the rail on the other side. Um, it, so long as it's cohesive to their surrounding neighborhoods and it, it brings in additional park space um, on the east side of the parkway. Um, on, on face value with limited information that we have, it seems to be, uh, a benefit to Sanniquin City.
Fair enough. I just think the question needs to be asked.
Sure.
Any of the big pros that you see?
Any big pros?
Any big pro that jumps out at you and says, oh, this, this really does one thing. Cause I can see one. Finishes a sidewalk on that east side that's never been touched.
Yes.
That end on both the north and the south, but that's not a reason to bring, you know, forty-four acres into the city.
Well, another big reason that we've heard from Rob Horlocker, the developer of Summit Ridge originally and all the commercial, is that commercial hasn't taken off at the south exit because of heads and beds. There's just not enough rooftops. And this would bring in additional rooftops in a non-impactful way. It's not high density. That's not townhouses. Uh, that's cohesive to the neighborhood and potentially could, uh, entice, um, you know, more local shopping and thereby more businesses.
Agreed. Dave, I can see that question.
It's not necessarily the question, but for me, it just
Oh, Councilman Hathaway, I should say, geez, I forget that.
It just brings a continuity to, to, to the, bringing it all in. I, I think we, Dennis can go back a few years when we done, looked at some of this annexation and where we're going to head with it anyway. I think it just fits in with, with part of what Sanniquin's going to go up to anyway. So I have no problem with starting that ball, looking at annexing that and
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we taking comments from the peanut gallery?
I'm thinking about it. Go ahead.
Hey, Chelsea Rowley. So my house is right there. This is the, the parkway we live on. And I'm just wondering in a development agreement, is there a way, when you get to that point, is there a way that the parkway could be finished off with the same sized houses that are currently there? And then they can go smaller from that, like a buffer, so you can finish the street looking the same? Cause it, I just feel like you've got these custom homes and then you'd have all this choppy, choppy, choppy. And then you've got church and another planned community. Like, it would just be so nice if the parkway could just be finished off with the custom homes just to make it look nice.
Thanks for the comment.
Two cents.
So, uh, do I hear a motion just to say, let's move forward and let them come up with the plan?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's move forward. All the details get scrubbed as things go on and, you know, we work with the property owner. Okay, uh, next item of business is, uh, training on open public meetings. And, um, I just want to tell you that this is by law has to be done every year. So, uh, dig in. Ben, would you like to take over or Dennis? Which, which one of you has the?
Um, we're just going to watch a, a quick seven minute video.
Good.
Um, that meets the requirements of the state. Many of you have just taken this training from Ludma and, and this was covered a little bit in that. This will give you a little more detail from the state auditor's perspective. And we'll cover just a couple of other things just prior to the budget retreat, uh, as well and, and then call it good.
So what's the Open and Public Meetings Act? It's the state law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in mind that this video is an overview and exceptions may exist based on your entity type. So what's considered an open and public meeting? It's when a governing body majority meets to discuss or act upon government business. It includes the meetings sometimes referred to as workshops or executive sessions. Regular meetings, public hearings, electronic meetings, and emergency meetings are all open and public meetings. Open and public meetings don't include a chance or social meetings. A public hearing is a type of open and public meeting where citizens have a reasonable opportunity to speak. Public hearings happen when a government adopts a budget or imposes or increases taxes or fees. An electronic meeting is a type of open and public meeting that's convened electronically, such as via phone or the internet. Remember, the governing body must adopt a resolution, rule, or ordinance allowing and governing electronic meetings. An open and public meeting may be closed to discuss any of the following. A person's character, competence, or health, security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, collective bargaining, litigation, purchase, sale, or lease of property if an open discussion would prevent the entity from completing the transaction on the best terms, investigations of criminal misconduct, and private or protected information per the Utah procurement code, including trade secrets. Two-thirds of the governing body need to vote yes to close a meeting. Quick math lesson, two divided by three equals sixty-six point seven percent. Let's say your governing body has five members. If three out of the five members vote yes, that equals sixty percent, which is not equal to or greater than sixty-six point seven percent. Which means you're one member short and instead need four out of five members to vote yes. During a closed meeting, a governing body can't interview someone applying to fill an elected position, discuss filling a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, discuss the character, competence, or health of a person whose name was submitted for consideration to fill a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, or approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or appointment. If a closed meeting is discussing a person's character, competence, or health, or security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, no recording or minutes are required. However, the presiding member needs to sign a sworn written statement stating such. If the closed meeting is held for any other reason, a recording must be made. Emergency meetings may be held to discuss an urgent matter due to unforeseen circumstances. In order to hold the meeting, the best notice that's feasible is provided of the time, location, and topics to be considered. An attempt is made to contact all governing body members and a governing body majority approves the meeting. Enities that hold regular meetings need to provide notice at least annually of the year's meeting schedule. As always, the notice must include date, time, and place. For entities that don't hold regularly scheduled regular meetings, twenty-four hours' notice must be provided. All meetings, whether regularly scheduled in advance over the course of the year or scheduled as needed, must provide no less than twenty-four hours' notice of meeting agendas. If a public hearing is held, public notice requirements change. Make sure to distinguish between regular meeting notice requirements and public hearing notice requirements. For regular meetings, an entity is only required to notify a newspaper and doesn't need to pay to publish a notice. For public hearings, notice must be published in at least one issue of a newspaper. If a newspaper of general circulation isn't available, written notice is posted in three public places within the entity's boundaries. Regular meetings require twenty-four hours' notice. Public hearings require seven days' notice. For both regular meetings and public hearings, written notice must be posted at the principal office of the governing body. Or, if no such office exists, at the building where the meeting will be held. Governing bodies must also provide notice of open and public meetings on the public notice website at publicnotice.utah.gov. By posting on the website and providing the email of the local newspaper, governing bodies can also meet the requirement to notify a newspaper. However, other requirements such as publishing in a newspaper still apply. Typically, posting on the public notice website is done by the records officer, recorder, or clerk. However, it's the governing body's responsibility to ensure notice is provided. State Archives has prepared a training manual and quick guide for owners and posters, as well as training videos that can be accessed at their website at archives.utah.gov. If your entity is increasing a fee or undergoing truth and taxation for a property tax increase, be aware that there are additional notice and posting requirements. Public meeting agendas need to include reasonably specified topics to be considered, with each topic listed under a separate agenda item on the meeting agenda. The governing body may not consider a topic in an open meeting that wasn't on the agenda. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic. However, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting. Meeting minutes and an audio recording are required for all open meetings with limited exceptions. When an open or closed meeting is required to be recorded, it must be unedited and contain all the portions of the meeting. Recordings of open meetings must be made available within three days. Every entity needs to establish procedures for the governing body's approval of minutes. Pending minutes are written minutes prepared in draft form and are subject to change before being approved by the governing body. Pending minutes must contain a clear indication, such as a draft or pending watermark, that the governing body hasn't yet approved the minutes and that they're subject to change. Pending minutes must be made available within thirty days. Approved minutes are written minutes of a meeting that have been approved by the governing body. Approved minutes are the official record of the meeting and must be made available within three business days. Whoever is responsible for taking the minutes during meetings Whoever is responsible for taking the minutes during meetings, typically the records officer, recorder or clerk, needs to be familiar with what OMA requires be contained in the minutes. When a governing body closes a meeting, the following must be publicly announced and entered into the minutes of the open meeting at which the closed meeting was approved. The reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting will be held and the vote of each member of the governing body, either for or against the motion to close the meeting. The recording and any minutes must include the date, time and location of the meeting, the names of the governing body members present and absent and the names of all others present except where disclosure would infringe on the confidentiality necessary to fulfill the original purpose of closing the meeting. For more information, access our local government resource center at resources.auditor.utah.gov.
And Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the state legislature made a change to the newspaper portion of that.
Correct.
Which is that it's no longer required in the newspaper. It's, but it is required to be on our website and on our social media. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the only update since, since, uh, this, uh, video came out that I'm aware of out of the, um, the state auditor's office. So we appreciate them putting a very concise, uh, training together. Also too, in, leading up to our, our, um, budget planning session, if there's any, uh, questions or concerns or thoughts with regard to our mission statement, which was given to our council, uh, previously, either in your budget binder or in your, um, Saniquin University binder, or the strategic vision that we have for our community and the, the goals that we're working on. This is, this is the time for you to, to spend the next several weeks or months, uh, going through those. Our, our main, uh, objectives in the, in the city, uh, first of all is preserving our agricultural heritage while developing a clean, safe and fun, family oriented community through well-planned growth and fiscal responsibility. And that's done through six main, uh, uh, activities, which is providing quality city services, promote and support economic development, ensure proactive regional collaboration, maintain a sustainable budget, promote community involvement and ensure public health and safety. And there are subcategories underneath those. Every action that the city takes in our city budget, um, we've, we fall into one or more of those criteria to ensure that the actions that we're doing are in accordance with your will. So if you want to change your will, uh, meaning change the direction that you would have us go in the upcoming planning session, please carefully consider the wording and even tweaking of those. Last year we, we added the public health and safety because of, of, um, the pandemic and, um, had certain things that we wanted to tweak to ensure that we kept our public health, our, our public first responders, uh, safe through, through that experience. And so we did make some, some tweaks last year. Every single time we go towards prioritizing, we try to, we, we recognize that, um, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. And we want to make sure that whatever we do, that you would have us do, that we do it to the best of our ability. And, and the way to, to ensure that we're doing the most important thing is, is to prioritize. Because if we came to you and said, we want you to put your blinders on and tell us exactly what you think about code enforcement. Well, you can say, yeah, code enforcement is pretty important. We think it's great. But when you look at code enforcement compared to public health and safety or compared to a new park or compared to a new trail or whatever it might be, then you start to do this. And then you go, okay, we need to put some dollars here and we need to put some dollars there. And the best way to really look at that is we, we have a, a, um, foundation of our community that we need to have public health and safety, a safe community for our residents to come home to. But we also want to make sure that we provide quality essential, essential services. So when they turn their faucet on or they flush their toilet, those things are taken care of. We want to make sure that, that, that we have a, a good quality of life, that parks and the trails and the programs that they enjoy are, are well balanced and that we are also providing, providing opportunities to keep our tax base growing so that it takes the burden off our residents and creates jobs and, and opportunity. So all of that balances out and any activity that you choose, you can start to go, hmm, this kind of fits multiple buckets. And so therefore maybe it's of a higher priority. And we just want you to consider that in, in, in the, uh, um, in the days ahead as we get closer to the retreat. And then recognizing that we all have our, uh, this was a concern after two thousand sixteen is staying in our lanes, right? And we all had, um, clearly I was outside of my lane and, and recognizing, um, uh, that we all have roles and responsibilities. Um, we have the role of the mayor and, and his leadership in, in guiding of our council. We have the role of the council, uh, in your policy establishment and your, your budget establishment. And then from those, uh, directives, either through your policy guidance and budget or the mayor's directives, we have the city manager that, that guides the efforts of the staff to ensure that we're working towards your, your, uh, uh, ends that you would have us, um, perform on behalf of your constituents. Because ultimately we all work for the public and we all have our, our roles and responsibilities and we overlap a little bit. So it's all important that we, we stick together. And, and, um, I appreciate the cohesiveness and the professionalism that you have as a, as an elected body. I think in the last several councils, we've done very, very well at treating each other, uh, with that professionalism. But that's not always been the case. There's been times when the council, uh, or the mayor or, or elected leaders have, have had so much animosity towards each other that, that we weren't able to work together. And several years ago, we had a BYU professor come in, um, who, who facilitated a, a really good, healthy discussion with the elected leaders to talk about what was their values and what did they care about and who were they? And how did they want to treat each other? And, and so we came up, um, the elected leaders at that time, I, I sat silent through that, came up with who you are. And, and I just want to state that really quick, um, you, the council, you are, uh, the city council strives to lead our community with fiscal responsibility, wise prioritization and transparency and honesty. You communicate respectfully with one another and with the community. You are a results-based council that aspires to grow the community's resources and leave a positive legacy for the future of Saniquin. And you do that by the following. You seek consensus where possible and allow compromise when consensus is not within reach. You allow respectful disagreement when, with another, um, choose not to take offense when your opinions differ. You hear each other out without interrupting. Um, you share all relevant information with each other. Uh, we don't allow withhold to advance a personal agenda. We do not filibuster. We state our arguments distinctly and avoid dominating. We come prepared to council meetings and carefully read the materials that have been delivered to us by, by morning. We shun favoritism. We do not use our positions to speak, uh, to seek special favors. And we support the mayor's role in managing the flow of the discussion of the meeting. Those are the things that were important and the values to the council that put this together. But if they don't necessarily reflect your values, we're open to changing this. This is yours. You need to own this. And, um, hopefully it helps you in, in the days ahead. And then lastly, um, I, I provided a list last time, last meeting when we were supposed to have this of, uh, New Year's resolutions for newly elected officials who want to leave a legacy that matters. And, and I've already provided that to you, so I won't read through those. Um, but some, some really great ideas and, and, um, I'm just showing them right now so that the public on YouTube can, can stop their video and, and see each one of these if they wanted to. And with that, Mayor, that completes your annual requirement for open public meetings.
I love it. Now, uh, one other thing, did you bring your Ludma test search? You still have yours that you took. I, I assume you took one before.
Uh, Dave just sent it to me. He just took it again.
You know what I'd like to do? I'd like to just have you put them in the, in a file.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll just stick them all together and Aaron, if you'll.
And I'll print off Dave here. I did.
Ben, you have mine?
I got yours and I have, um, mine as well. You know, it's really important to be on the same page of the, the planning commission and with the state laws. So that's great that you did this.
Well, I think it's important because of all of the legal aspects of everything that we try to grasp. And, uh, we're still learning. I probably say too much when I probably shouldn't. And, you know, one of these days I'll give you a flipper and you shoot me, you know? If I speak out of turn, but you know what? I'm still at a point to where I'm, I'm very passionate and, uh, thank you for your good, uh, involvement in this meeting so far. We've still got a long ways to go tonight, so.
Just like throw a comment out about the, the thirty-five to forty-five minutes. I think we ought to add thirty-five hours to four days.
This, this meeting was only supposed to go ten minutes, so I don't know what you guys do to make it go longer.
Who did the thirty-five minutes on that? How'd you that?
So it was, then you get one hour's worth of credit for the planning commission. And I, I swear I heard through the planning commission, this is how long it takes and you get an hour of credit. I had no idea that it took me nearly three hours to do it too. And I've done this for sixteen years and so I, but I learned a lot as well. It was, it was good refresher and good update in the laws. And is there things that you've learned or something new or just something that, uh, um, was it beneficial, I guess?
I still have a lot to learn. I, I was opening up the codes and looking at it and geez, there's a lot of laws.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot in there. I'm wondering if they actually check our answers though.
I guess.
Cause they were opening the questions and I still got the certificate and I don't think anyone actually looked what I wrote.
There were, there were answers that said, we'll read this and get back to you.
Those, those will come up when you rerun for office.
Well, we digress. We ready to move on? Great, uh, reports. Ben, we'd like to start with you.
Um, Mayor, I don't have anything specific to report tonight, other than if I could answer any questions you might have. And I do need to yield some time over to, um, to our finance director if that's possible.
Why don't we do that right after Councilmember Hathaway, okay?
Very good.
All right, uh, Mr. Marker.
I don't have anything specific, Mayor, to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay.
I'm sure Betsy would report that tomorrow's a local officials' day and that Dennis will be driving a bus of, of our young future leaders up to the state capitol to meet their legislators and, and experience what life is life like in the capitol within this forty-five day period.
I was going to go to that and I have enough things that I need to get done tomorrow that my day is already taken care of. So I found that my few hour a day is turning into a full-time job. I'm thinking about moving to a full-time job or something again. Sheesh. Anyway, uh, Councilmember Hathaway, would you like to report?
Yeah, uh, so I had a meeting with John and Shawna Jo and Paige. It was a, I, I'll call it the rodeo meeting. That's what we're calling it. But, uh, some good things came out of that and the balls has started rolling on some ideas. Um, if you guys remember last year, we, there was a possibility that we was going to try to get a second rodeo. But we kind of, the concern was the COVID issue. So we kind of backed off of that, but we went ahead and, and Paige is going to go ahead and talk to the stock people and maybe see if we can do a, it's called a bulls in Bronx only.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and of course then we'll have the, the celebration is, this year is the little buckaroo is the July thirtieth and the, the big rodeo is August fifth and sixth. But the other thing is, is I brought up is, is, again, it's, it, it comes back to, and we'll talk about this in the retreat and how far money goes and don't go. But some of the ideas is, is that we're, we're looking at a demolition derby, and possibly doing another concert. And, uh, and Paige even suggested we look at maybe a, a talent show. So the whole idea of this was is that I feel that we have that nice arena out there. I'd just like to see if we can do more things to use it. So.
Good.
That's what we're going to kind of gear that, the, the activities to. And of course we'll see how any of this pans out, but.
One, one thought while we're right there, both Dave and I will be gone on the, uh, week of the first of March to Rural Water. And, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sitaway is going to be gone that day too. I'm kind of thinking, we have five Tuesdays in, um, in that month. Is it possible that we could maybe go the, our second meeting and then the fifth, fifth, uh, Tuesday? And, uh, that way we'll not miss anything. We won't have any other problems going on. Do you think that will, can you, can you look at that as you start looking ahead?
I will ask the mayor if it's okay and if he says yes, we'll do it.
I know the guy. Okay, Councilmember Sitaway.
Uh, nothing really to report. I just, I just want to mention, I went to the planning commission meeting last week. I was really impressed with all the new members, all the commissioners there. And they had great questions for everything, those, all the presentations and I think we've got a good group of people there and they're going to help us out a lot.
I, I just want to mention something here. Uh, Councilmember Sitaway was given an assignment about homes with low income, uh, heating, air conditioning, uh, problems, uh, windows, insulation. And, uh, we've kind of put this together because we found funding through MAG that will help us accomplish this. And, uh, we've contacted, um, one of the local, um, state presidents. We were able to find a family and we're starting to see if this is going to be able to work, on a little easier basis, but address some of the homes. And, uh, see if we can help families that need help. And, uh, this is, this is really Councilmember Sitaway and myself trying to build this up. And, uh, you know, it's not anything we can publish and throw out there, but we do want to find ways that we can help families. And I think this is a real good thing. We found a little bit of success. I'm going to meet with, uh, um, a, um, Juan Diaz, I think is his name. He is a legal representation from, uh, Hispanic community. And I will be meeting with him tomorrow morning. I don't know how long the meeting will take place. He listed a lot of concerns, but it may be very well that this kind of a, a way in which we can utilize some MAG funds can help these families. They have to own the home. They have to do a bunch of other things. But, you know, through the winter especially, and we're just trying to get this put together. So hopefully we'll have more that we can, we can do on this in the future. Councilmember Adcock?
I've been able to reach out to, uh, some of the people that I've been assigned to work with and I'm very pleased with their response, their cooperativeness and openness as far as information that I desired and I'm grateful to be able to work with them. And I appreciate their professionalism.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, we're starting to make some differences. I just wanted to report also a little bit on the, the, uh, mountain bike park that I presented, uh, two weeks ago. I have two groups that have, have, uh, contacted me with an army of people that are ready to go to work. Leaders in, in many of the organizations around that are already building parks, people that build trails, trails for, uh, like snow burden and solitude. And, you know, these are, these are people that know what they're doing. And, and yet, um, we're trying to find some other ways to work on this. I met with Maverick. They're interested in helping us out. And what I proposed and what I'm going to look at proposing with some of our other businesses is a series of benches or picnic tables that we'll be able to move into there that will, that the business can su- support and pay for and help us get up in there and let families go for a hike on this. I've got a whole bunch of things that are starting to come together. However, I need your help. We need to name this thing. I can't fill out a paper without a name of the thing. And so I need to find out a way to name this park. And, and we put on the slide or I put on the slide, I will do that later. You know, Payson had a pretty good moniker with Forbake cause that's where it was. You know, what do we have? The Bacon Ridge? It's, it's got to have a name. I wonder if in the next two weeks, we can figure out a way to do this. I really could use that right now. Gives it a little more credence and, um, there, there's a lot of interest in this, a lot. And, um, just want to keep moving forward, okay? Councilmember Montoya had a, a personal item that she had to take care of. She will be back however, in a little while. Ben, you wanted a little time? Okay.
So Ben has graciously given me some time just to announce publicly that I am stepping down from Santaquin City. To pursue another opportunity. Just something that's first and foremost is for my family, just to be able to spend a little bit more time with them and. Some other personal things that I want to talk about on camera and. But I've been very grateful to have this opportunity, grateful for staff for taking a chance on me, you know? You know, this young kid who really thought he was cooler than he was coming here and I'm sure Ben remembers that. And it's just been, I've I've learned so much, you know, I've really been able to fulfill. What I feel like I came here to do, which was to learn about city government. And oh, boy, did I learn about city government. So I just really grateful for this opportunity, grateful to the council members who have supported me. All along this way, especially with different personal struggles, mental health struggles and just trying to find that balance. And so. Just want to let you know that I'm doing a lot to prepare for the next people who are coming. Doing a lot of preparation, doing a lot of how-to manuals for different systems and processes that I've helped introduce into the city. Just so that they can have a. Have a good foot up and can hopefully hit the ground running. I'll still be available. My start date is February seventh, but I'll be here until until the Friday before February fourth. I'll also be available by phone just to help with the transition. My new position is four days a week from home, so I can definitely accommodate and help you guys out with the transition, so. But I just want to let you know, I want to leave you guys in the best position you possibly can be with a new finance director, new city recorder and. I'm just very grateful for. All the opportunities, the good, the bad, and I just, I feel like I'm a better man because of this opportunity that I've been here, so really do appreciate it, both staff and council, so.
From from my own point of view, I've had some good talks with you. Thank you for the time that you put in. Thank you for everything that you have done for the city to make things positive. We appreciate your service very much.
Thanks.
I I want to thank him, Aaron, as well, and his wife Jill and and their family that has grown as as our family has grown here and. And wish him the very best in his future endeavors. It's been, it's been a a good experience to have Aaron here and we just just want to wish him the very best in his new opportunity and. Anything we can do to support him in that effort, we're happy to do that, too.
Thank you.
Likewise, I'd like to thank him for the assistance that he was with us new candidates trying to figure out this election process and. And walk us through it and hold our hand and help it make it happen legally. So thank you.
Absolutely. Those are a lot of my questions.
Okay. Final thing right now. We need to excuse into an executive session. Discussing character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual under state law. In order to do so, I need to have a motion. Not a motion to adjourn the meeting, but a motion to excuse to an executive session.
Do we have the quorum numbers that we need to do that?
If it's a hundred percent.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to enter into an executive session.
Do I hear a second? Roll call vote or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will do so now. Are we going to stay in here and just excuse the others?
Yes.